Good evening and welcome to the March 8, 2021 work session of the Mayor and Council and Planning Commission. Tonight, we have one item for discussion, and that is the draft Lake Forest Mall master plan presentation. And to begin this, I will turn it over to our Director of Planning Code Administration, John Schlichting, and I will invite tech team to bring up all of our presenters, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Planning Commission. I am John Schlichting, your Director of Planning and Code Administration. I am pleased this evening to introduce the team responsible for what I consider a tremendous piece of work, the first public draft of the proposed master plan for the Lake Forest Mall property. While the core long-range planning team of Rob Robinson, Kirk Eby, and Laura Mafud will be presenting tonight and are the principal authors of the document, they were ably assisted throughout the process by Tom Lanigan and Sharon Disk with support and counsel from Tanisha and Dennis as well. It was and will continue to be a collaborative, multi-departmental effort. There's a lot to cover tonight, and staff is presenting a lot of detail, but please consider this a big picture workshop. What we're hoping to achieve tonight is your blessing to release this draft by the end of March to begin the 60-day public comment period in advance of a joint public hearing on June 7. We believe that the document before you accurately reflects the guidance from the community during our extensive outreach last fall as well as your guidance at the work session in December. So in terms of guidance tonight, we're hoping you won't see any fatal flaws, but please let us know if you do, and we're happy to consider minor tweaks as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Rob to start the presentation.
Thank you, John, and good evening, Mayor, members of the Council, and members of the Planning Commission. Next slide, please. So to begin, not that nobody really knows this, this is the Lake Forest Mall. It's a little over 100 acres. It's comprised of eight parcels. It's surrounded by county roads, state roads, and larger city roads. Next slide, please. So as background, as John mentioned, as everyone may remember, we held a joint work session back in December. And during that work session, you know, we sought guidance on the master plan structure, the contents, and the themes to be explored through recommendations. The plan before you this evening and that we're hoping to release for public comment reflects the guidance received from the Mayor and Council and the Planning Commission in December. And as John mentioned, the work session tonight provides an opportunity for the Planning Commission and the Council to preview the document. Really, as he mentioned, our goal is that you're aware of what we're putting out to the public. And as John mentioned, if there's, you know, minor comments, you know, a sentence here, a change of graphic there to make changes prior to release, you know, we're looking for that. But substantive changes, you know, we hope are raised to the forefront during the comment period in the public hearing process. Next slide, please. So the master plan itself is structured into nine individual sections. And what you would think of typically as the plan are sections four through nine. And in each of these sections, we include a narrative discussing the topic, the master plan recommendations, and any special conditions. And I'd like to take a moment because we haven't done special conditions since the 2003 land use element. And for the public and everybody else, the difference between a special condition and a recommendation is the land use article says development is to be, you know, in compliance and conformance with recommendations, which gives a little bit of gray area. Special conditions are subject to a separate but concurrent public hearing and once adopted must be adhered to. So whatever is written as a special condition, you know, is locked in. There's no gray area with it. It's very black and white. So again, we are doing some special conditions in this one. If through the process, you know, the determination is, you know, not a special condition, you know, we always have the ability to just make this a recommendation or as we go through the public hearing process, remove it altogether. Next slide, please. So I'm going to begin now the discussion of the actual document. As we go through after each section, staff at the end is going to, because of the amount of information and the length, open it up to questions and comments, section by section, as opposed to waiting till the end. So the first section is the introduction. This essentially is two parts, and it establishes the purpose and need of this master plan. And as we talked about all along, this plan is not intended to be a detailed block-level design plan. We're really not going for that. As it stated here, we wanted to find the what and the why, but not the where. So as you go through, we're going to explain with the various facets what's needed, maybe some amounts, but we're not going to say, and it needs to be located here. The second half of the introduction basically is a broad description of the existing conditions, the existing stormwater management ponds. Often throughout the document, you will read the core area. This is, you know, the 86.4 acres, as you can see in the graphic on the presentation, that exists outside of the pond areas. And lastly, something different to help land context. As I mentioned, you know, the mall site is surrounded by major roads. We've done corridor descriptions, both on the county side or the city, both sides of the city side to sort of give the reader a sense of the context, land use-wise of what's going on, and some of the morphology, you know, the buildings, the access points, et cetera. So before I move on, as I said, we'll begin, are there any questions or comments related to the introduction?
If anybody has questions or comments, since I can't see everybody on the screen, just unmute yourself. And well, now that I can, just raise your hand if you have any comments, otherwise we'll move forward. All right, I don't see any hands up. Go ahead, Rob.
Sure. Next section, please. Next page. So the second section is the terms and definitions. This is the glossary. We felt it very important. Sometimes you see it both ways, glossary at the end, glossary at the beginning. Because of the discussions that go on, we felt that it was important that everybody sort of read through the terms and conditions. So as they read them, for lack of a term, the meat of the document, they don't have misconceptions about what's being discussed. And a lot of our terms and definitions, some of them may differ slightly from the zoning ordinance. An example of that is sort of the townhouse as we talk about that. And then we have other terms that are not defined or used at all in the city's ordinance, but are very important to the discussion of the master plan. And examples of these is missing middle housing, housing affordability, and bungalow court, as you can see the graphic here. And we'll ask once again, are there any questions or can we move on to the meat, which I think everybody wants to really talk about?
Well, Rob, before you go, why don't you, why don't you give us definitions for those three terms?
Okay, bear with me then.
Well, you know, I mean, you don't have to read the exact legal definition, but just give us in the public sort of a digest.
Okay, so if you actually go in the document, the missing middle definition is quite long. But the summation is it's a residential unit that's intended to be sold or rented at a price point targeted to middlecome households midway between higher-priced housing like single-family and lower-priced housing garden-style apartments and condos. Housing affordability, that definition. Bear with me, please. This housing with a market-driven price point that allows households of various incomes to rent or purchase it by spending no more than 30% of their annual income. And then bungalow courts are multiple small detached dwellings no greater than 1,200 square feet in size, located in close proximity to each other in a condominium regime and arranged around a central green or open areas. Bungalow courts have shared amenities, spaces, and no private yards or garages. So again, this is why we sort of wanted it upfront, because this is stuff you typically don't find in Chapter 24 now, but really lends context as you go through the document.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think this is the first time we've seen missing middle in any, any planning document that I can recall. But I could be wrong.
No, we, so academically, we've talked about it, but this is the first time we've used it in a master plan.
All right, thank you, Rob. Go right ahead.
So with that, I'm going to the next section. I'm going to turn it over to Laura Mafud.
Laura may be on mute.
Sorry, I even wrote it down to unmute myself and forgot. So this next section, existing conditions and context summarizes the background research and data that staff reviewed prior to developing the draft plan. And this information was presented at the work session in December. Staff divided this section into three subsections and included a brief key points paragraph after each one to highlight the major takeaways. So for the growth projections and trends subsection, the key points are that demand for housing and jobs are competing for the same space in the city. And multifamily housing and professional, scientific, and technical and healthcare uses are encouraged to accommodate future growth. For surrounding land use, overall, there are very few missing middle housing units and a significant amount of retail within one-half mile of the current mall. And then for surrounding demographics, the population around the mall is more diverse in terms of race, age, and income when compared to the city as a whole. And then more people use transit or walk to work versus driving. So the purpose of this section is to help set the stage for future recommendations in the plan. Next page, please. Section four is the vision framework section. And this is really the first core part of the plan where we start providing recommendations. This section discusses the purpose of a vision that it communicates the big picture of what a plan is trying to achieve. The narrative establishes planned goals and priorities that are summarized here on the slide. And these came out of staff's research and the public outreach effort and were agreed upon again at the joint work session in December. Next slide, please. And these priorities help inform the following recommendations. Redevelopment should create a strong, unique sense of place. Connectivity through a variety of transportation options is a design priority. The existing surface parking lots should be replaced with more intensive uses that generate economic activity. Next slide, please. The development should be mixed use, but that includes more than just the traditional residential or office over retail. It includes a broader range of commercial uses and variety of housing types. They're all well-integrated together. But this integrated mixed-use development can be achieved at the project scale. So every individual, individual building doesn't necessarily have to include a mix of uses, but there should be some mixed-use buildings included in the development. Next slide. There should be an interconnected network of community spaces and open and green spaces for recreation and gathering. And they should be available to the surrounding areas as well. Flexibility is important to accommodate change over time while still maintaining the overall master plan vision. And then lastly, the plan recommends rezoning from C2 to MXD. So before we move on, are there any questions or comments for staff on the recommendations for the vision section?
Laura, can I ask you really quick? In the recommendation, I know the MXD is obviously the most appropriate place to land this. Given the status of ownership and kind of the scenarios of how that'll play out, how would that get initiated?
So we do talk about this a little more in the last section, but the MXD zone would require at least a 10-acre parcel to come in to rezone and establish a sketch plan for the property.
Could, could we in some way initiate that, or do we have to have a willing contract purchaser?
I mean, there is the option to comprehensively rezone the property, but staff is not recommending that. We would prefer to see it remain C2 to allow for more interim uses in the meantime, and then come in with a sketch plan with a larger portion in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Go right ahead, Laura.
All right. Next slide, please. This next section, section five, is amenities. And this section expresses the importance of amenity space, how it contributes to a greater quality of life and can facilitate diversity. Amenities can take the form of open and green space or buildings and centers. And this section addresses both of those types. For open and green space, the plan encourages any redevelopment exceed the amount of green area required in the MXD zone. It also discusses appropriate park typologies based off those that were outlined in the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Master Plan element, as well as the importance of unifying community gathering spaces, programming, retention, and enhancement of the stormwater ponds and an enhanced pedestrian realm. And for buildings and centers, the plan discusses different types of civic uses, how those can contribute and enhance the future redevelopment. And these can be public or privately owned, but they're generally open to the public and benefit the greater community. So the plan also discusses potential funding strategies for those uses. And then lastly, in this section emphasizes the importance of establishing connections amongst the various amenities through a greater network of paths and trails. Next slide. For amenities, the recommendations include provision of a variety of different types of amenity spaces to appeal to diverse groups of people. Amenity space should be usable and accessible. There should be appropriately sized spaces to support community gathering and special events. The stormwater pond should be retained and placed under a category-two forest conservation easement. Next slide. And they should also be enhanced and integrated into the larger green space network. There should be an enhanced pedestrian realm as well as a civic use facility. And the plan recommends exploring opportunities for public-private partnerships to overcome some of the funding challenges with the civic use facility. It also recommends having both programmed and unprogrammed amenity spaces and a well-integrated green space network throughout the site. Next slide, please. So this is the first section that has a special condition that Rob mentioned earlier, and that is an overall minimum of 35% green area for the entire 102-acre plan area. So this falls between what's required in the MXD zone now, which requires 25% green area for the residential portion and 40% green area for the commercial portion. Staff did their own analysis to come up with this 35% requirement and that methodology was discussed in a memo that was included in your packets. So are there any questions or comments for staff on the amenity sections?
Questions, comments?
I'll jump in with a question if you don't mind. Does the 35% include that pond and the associated area that across, across the street essentially from the, from the, it's disconnected. The other corner.
It does include the stormwater management ponds and its associated green area around them.
Well, the one, but there's one that's really disconnected from the rest of the property because it's across.
It does cross the larger pond at the corner of 355 and 124 is included in that.
Yeah, okay.
So piggybacking on, on to Chairman Bauer's question, what is, what does that existing green space represent as a percentage of the overall site area? Like, are we at 34.9% now, or are we less than that?
So the ponds, oh, sorry, go ahead, Rob.
The three pond areas are 15.6 acres of the 102. I'm sorry, Laura.
That's okay. So it's about 15% of the 102 acres.
So the 35% would include the ponds or be distinct, or is it 35% for the remainder of the acreage?
The 35% would include the ponds.
Okay. Can I ask another question? I know it might be premature to be talking about the road network. Was there ever any thought of straightening out Russell Avenue and kind of creating another? I mean, that would, that would definitely create some other space outside that corridor right now, the Russell corridor. But it would also, it may also require some. It would have a, I guess it would have a conflict with the configuration of the existing pond. So just wondering if that was ever given any thought to kind of square it off.
We did have internal discussions about it, and we think it's something that could be explored. But given our approach to this master plan, we were somewhat hesitant to actually write that in because of potentially the engineering challenges or MDE challenges. But I think all of us would be more than willing to take that curve out if possible as a, as a more defined plan comes in.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that was one of the first things I thought of when we started looking at this at the overhead. And then you mentioned the the tree, I guess, tree plantings around the ponds as well as part of developing the park amenities. I thought we had removed a bunch of trees from the banks of those ponds because they were potentially destructive to the, to the dams around the pond. Is that so?
We are required to remove trees from dam banks, but especially the one pond the Chairman Bauer mentioned. There's a lot more acreage there, so we really feel there's an opportunity to make these places special. And this is why we mentioned a category-two easement. One, logically, it makes sense to help fulfill the required forest con. But category-two is a lot, it's more like a tree save area. So we're not really trying to create a forest, but you can, you can do paths through it, you can do furniture through it. So we think, you know, sort of to the question, it allows it to be enhanced and brought in to the larger development as opposed to, oh, it's that water and some scrub trees off to the corner.
There is a possibility of the current configuration of the ponds changing.
Um, that, once again, you know, there's so much there that would need MDE approval. We didn't necessarily want to go down that road.
Okay, all right. I guess my last comment, last thing is just a comment. What impresses me is the special condition for the connectivity of all of the amenities throughout this, what we presume will be a larger community. But I think it's, it's great to be able to have that kind of connectivity of all of our, of the green spaces, whether they're active or passive, whether they're pocket parks or larger. But I think that's a pretty important element and actually would be a factor in making it a more cohesive kind of community, both residentially and for the businesses as well. So, and certainly would encourage people to get out of their cars and take advantage of this, this kind of environment. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions, or we'll just go, go right ahead, Laura?
All right, I'll turn it over to Kirk Eby to go over the next sections.
Okay, well, thank you, Laura, and good evening, Mayor and City Council and Planning Commission. So this is the transportation section of the plan. And the narrative portion discusses the goals of including a grid street network using the city's road code, choosing the appropriate road typologies for use in Lake Forest and improving external connectivity. Next slide. So the narrative also discusses the need to enhance the transit center, encourage safe non-vehicular transportation options, and to discourage large surface parking lots. Next slide. So the recommendations for the transportation section are an outgrowth of the narrative and include the following. So the transportation network should be a grid that encourages safe biking and walking and provides internal connectivity. There should be a hierarchy of roads that use the appropriate road code typology to support adjacent land uses. And if the outer driveway circling the mall is retained, and sometimes that's referred to as a ring road, it should be incorporated into the street grid and rebuilt to match one of the city's road code typologies. Next slide. So additional recommendations include providing a biking connectivity or bike and pedestrian system that links amenities, transit, and land uses. Some micro mobility stations such as for scooters, and those should be located throughout the development. The design should respond to the existing external connectivity points, such as that one entrance off of Montgomery Village Avenue, and there's obviously other entrances besides that. And then loading and delivery areas for non-residential uses must be accessed using commercial service roads. Next slide. And the additional, or additional recommendations include encouraging a connection between Lake Forest Boulevard and Contour Road, exploring ways to coordinate with other government agencies to improve safety, connectivity, and bike pedestrian facilities along Lost Knife Road, Montgomery Village Avenue, Russell Avenue, and Odenhall Avenue, and retaining and enhancing the Lake Forest Transit Center, along with possibly relocating it closer to Maryland 355. Next slide, or next slide, sorry. And I think this is the last slide of transportation recommendations. So we want to discourage service parking lots for retail use and encourage shared and structured parking, which will allow more land to be utilized for buildings, amenities, and other sort of more productive uses. We want to incorporate electric charging stations, order, and the pickup areas where you can pick up your orders, the ride-sharing drop-off areas, and micro mobility stations, especially in the parking areas provided for non-residential uses. So that's all of the transportation section for the plan, and I'll pause to see if there are any questions about this particular section or the recommendations.
Any questions or comments? Neil Harris.
Just a quick one. I'm curious why we want separate commercial loading or commercial access roads as opposed to letting commercial vehicles share the roads and just use some sort of, you know, back alley access? Or is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what we're talking about. But we wanted to make sure that the alleys are not too small for what they're intended to be used for. So we want to make sure that the larger commercial trucks would actually be able to get in there and access the commercial areas and employment areas. At the same time, as you mentioned, kind of turning them to kind of alleys so that they're more hidden and not really, you know, as visible as the, as the primary streets are.
All right, I was just concerned about having back alleys, the commercial alleys that are not, not widely used after hours and being kind of a waste of space. I know some of the shopping centers around here, you just end up with these dark, lonely spaces that seem less savory.
This is why, if I may jump in, we developed the commercial service roads with the road code to address that specific issue. So when you look at the cross-section, they do require lighting, they have sidewalks on one side, they have curbing gutter. So again, it adds to the greater grid network, but its function really is more addressed to getting in and out of parking garages or loading zones. But to your point, you know, it's not a dark, you know, 20-foot wide strip of asphalt.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments before we move on? Mike?
So I think there's a lot of effort here in terms of the roads to reduce speeds and increase pedestrian safety, especially at the major intersections where you're getting rid of the, the right turn. What, I don't know what you call it, the right turn speed lane, I guess. On basically all of the intersections, the four major intersections surrounding this road network. The, that, the busiest road here is 124 because of both the, it's basically six lanes for almost the entire length. I think it is for the entire length from Russell to Lost Knife. Has there been, was there any thought in terms of enhancing pedestrian safety and access to the adjacent or the area across the street of proposing a pedestrian bridge? And one could say the same thing for Odenhall, I suppose, or even Lost Knife. Is any thought there?
I'll jump in, Kirk, if you don't mind. Within the narrative, we have a discussion about doing away with the uncontrolled right turn movements at all the intersections to increase pedestrian safety. And that discussion led to the recommendation Kirk discussed about working with MC DOT and with SHA on doing that. We did not have discussions about a pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the concern is that, that just, you know, if we're going to enhance pedestrian safety, might as well enhance it to the adjacent areas. And so that way, that, that is a major, I think, concern. Pedestrian traffic across 124, that if we want to improve that connectivity, that might be one way to do it. SHA is going to let us get rid of two lanes on, on both sides of the street. So to reduce the number of lanes, that might be a thought, but anyway. Just some questions about that. Anyway, it looks reasonable. I like the connection from Lake Forest Boulevard to, through the, through the property to Contour. I think that that makes a lot of sense. It gives the opportunity to create a street grid, I think is important for this.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. Okay, Kirk, go right ahead.
Okay, so next, we're going to talk about the residential section of the plan. I'm, the narrative portion begins by noting that the residential is an important component of the plan, but it's not the primary driver. So the goal is really not to create a bedroom community, but instead, the goal is to create a mixed-use, mixed-income community that has a diversity of housing options within its residential areas. So to best utilize the limited amount of land that's available, multifamily and missing middle unit types are encouraged, while the single-family units that take up a lot more land are somewhat discouraged. And allowing the market to produce affordable-priced units is important, which is, you know, a little bit different from our regulated affordable housing that's under our zoning code. And so is providing both rental and ownership opportunities. And the plan Um, and the plan should establish a maximum number of units and ensure that there is an appropriate mix of unit types by setting, um, sort of ranges of units for each unit type. Okay, next slide. And so the residential narrative also encourages, uh, coordinating with, uh, the Montgomery County Public School System on the public school needs and introduces design standards for, uh, residential uses. And, uh, the next slide, we'll begin talking about the residential design standards. Um, so these are meant to be high level guidelines and are not meant to be, uh, designing individual buildings or even blocks within a development. Um, these are really supposed to again, to be a high level. Um, so the, the design standards seek to ensure that housing is integrated with other uses in a way that does not impede or discourage a mix of uses. Um, that amenities are balanced with and reflect the housing types and locations. And that residential scale streets and alleys will serve townhouse and, uh, missing middle areas. And additional on-street parking for townhouses that are less than twenty feet wide, uh, should be provided within the same block. Uh, next slide. So the standards also seek to ensure that, uh, bungalow courts are designed to be missing middle units and are not allowed to function like large expensive detached houses. Um, parking for triplexes and quadplexes, uh, reflect their likely needs or should reflect their likely needs and demand for parking, um, and should take into account their location within the, the development and the available parking in the surrounding area. Um, when determining what the appropriate, uh, parking ratio should be for those particular units, um, and residential blocks uh, should have a variety of unit types rather than just being monotonous groups, uh, of all the same type. So we're, we're looking for some diversity in there. Uh, next slide, please. And for multifamily specifically, there are some design standards that are really geared towards multifamily. So, um, one, one of those is that it should be, it can be built as a standalone building, or it can be part of a vertical mixed use building. Um, and either way, it should include enhanced pedestrian realm, at least on the, the parts of the building that face the street. Um, any multifamily that is next to a sidewalk, uh, should include an inviting pedestrian scaled ground level elevation. And, um, multifamily should be located within a five minute walk of amenities and open space. Um, you know, recognizing that the multifamily itself will have limited, uh, open space, uh, onsite particularly. Um, and a greater percentage of two bedroom and larger units, um, should be provided within each building, uh, with fewer one bedroom studios. And that's really going back to sort of the vision, the exercise that was done, uh, I guess almost two years ago now, um, that again, we talked about sort of in the beginning, uh, with the background information for the master plan. Um, and then taller buildings are encouraged over the low rise garden style buildings, and that helps to of course increase density, um, and create more of a sense of a different place within the city. Um, next slide, please. So, uh, the recommendations for the residential, um, obviously flow naturally out of those narratives that we, the narrative we were just talking about. Um, and it includes things like, um, encouraging more creative housing design and housing types to, uh, be included. Um, as well as a broader range of market driven affordability, um, and housing development proposals, uh, should include an amenity and open space plan. And in terms of the actual regulated affordable housing, um, that should not be in excess of what's required under the city's A P F O requirement. Um, and complying with the residential design standards that we talked about, uh, over the last few slides, uh, those should be adhered to. And there should be a, uh, uh, coordination again with M C P S to see if there is a need for a school site, um, due to the residential impact of, of the Lake Forest development itself. And if there is, then there should be sort of an area set aside, or at least something done to sort of take that into consideration. Um, for either an elementary or a middle school, we didn't, staff didn't feel that it would really have an impact on a high school. Um, next slide, please. So, uh, as mentioned, there are some special conditions associated with residential. Um, so the first one is that there's a, a limit of sixteen hundred units total that could be built. I mean, within that sixteen hundred units, um, we're also recommending, um, some ranges of, uh, the allowed allowable units by type. So townhouses would be allowed up, up to a seven percent of the unit mix. Uh, missing middle units could comprise twenty to thirty percent of the unit mix, and then the remaining sixty-three to seventy-three percent of the unit mix would be multifamily, and of course multifamily can be rental or owned. Single family detached houses on individual lots, uh, are prohibited. And if there's any townhouses that are narrower than twenty feet, um, then additional on-street parking spaces must be provided for those within the same block. And, uh, that pretty much, uh, sums up the residential section of the plan. So I'll pause again to see if there are any questions about this section or the recommendations or the special conditions.
All right. Uh, I saw Danny's hand first and then Ryan. Go ahead, Danny.
Just a quick question. So, so no single family homes is, is that the, 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 the guidance there?
Yes, now there, so we did talk about, um, the, uh, bungalow courts, which are kind of like single family, but they're really meant to be smaller detached, uh, units that are part of a condominium regime and that are not, you know, big mansions on big lots will say, I'll just come around and say that, right? That's not really what we're trying to accomplish here. We, we're trying to accomplish, um, you know, a broader range of affordability that's more market driven, and that's one of the reasons we felt that single family, uh, detached houses are really not appropriate, especially they, they also take up a lot more land than even the townhouses, which, you know, take up a fair amount of land too. So, um, in terms of also meeting some of the, the, the plan's vision of, um, you know, creating a sense of place and a, and a unique place within the city. Um, that's another thing that would make it unique is by having more of these other unit types, um, and.
So, so when you talk, when you talk bungalow, what's the, what's the square footage kind of limit, I guess?
Right. I think in our definitions, we limited them to, uh, twelve hundred square feet, and hopefully Rob's looking at the definition, he's shaking his head. So
That, that is correct.
Limit them.
Yeah, and, and we came up with twelve hundred because under the M X D zone, that's the maximum square footage for an urban cottage under the M X D zone.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I will go to Ryan.
Thanks. Uh, just a couple of questions about, uh, packet page ninety and ninety-one, those two, last two slides, uh. The, uh, uh, header of the slides, uh, distinguished between recommendations and special conditions, which Rob Robinson was talking about at the beginning of the presentation, the distinction between those two. So, uh, with respect to ninety-one, let's stay on that since I see that the tech team has pulled that one up. Um, when we talk about the mix of residential units here, we're talking about a proposed special condition, which in a sense is more specifically and strictly enforceable going forward, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then hopping back to packet page ninety, if the tech team would flip back one. Okay. So here, um, these elements are not special conditions proposed, but rather recommendations proposed, and in particular, uh, I wanted to ask about the third bullet as a recommendation, uh, not to, uh, move forward with uh, affordable housing, in other words, M P D U, uh, set aside housing uh, above what is already required under city code. Um, and there, I guess I had sort of a technical question. First of all, that's going to be a recommendation. It's not going to be sort of as specifically binding as if it were a special condition, right? So there's a little bit of flexibility built into that depending on, you know, what a developer may want to do with respect to, um, the number of M P D U's above and beyond the floor that our existing law creates, subject to, of course, uh, further planning and approval processes.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I, I mean, the reason I bring that up, I understand the objective here is we've spoken many times about the fact that um, market rate affordable housing is heavily concentrated on the east side of the city around, uh, the area surrounding Lake Forest Mall, and that we're trying to, uh, create, uh, more of a mixed income environment, uh, and a mix of units. And I, I know that staff is really trying to do that with, uh, this interesting mix of units in slide, uh, ninety-one, packet page ninety-one with all this talk of missing middle, which I think is great and I encourage. Um, but I just kind of wanted to highlight how that is juxtaposed to our M P D U program and how, uh, the draft master plan kind of treats the two, the two different categories so that we all sort of understand that going forward. And then this may be a question for down the road that doesn't need to be answered tonight. Maybe it's for our legal folks. Trying to understand what actual authority we would have uh, to, uh, prevent additional voluntary M P D U's from being built by a developer above and beyond our floor. In other words, we haven't generally traditionally used a ceiling for M P D U's and what sort of legal authority we would have, uh, hypothetically, to be able to tell somebody, you can't have more than this many M P D U's. I mean, ultimately, we run the M P D U program. Uh, so a developer creates those units and then we, and then the, the program goes through city hall and we, you know, run how those units are, uh, are filled by residents or, or homeowners who purchase the, the ownership units. But I'm trying to just sort of understand the interplay between all of those things.
And just be- before we go in real fast, when we meant regulated, we intentionally did not use city because our concern also not, not being able to crystal ball everything, uh, but we wanted to make sure we included any county programs.
Okay.
Um, thanks for saying that, Rob. I was going to mention, I know it came up during the retreat, there was a question asked about the county's program. And I believe that Tom and Louise did some research on the county's twenty-five percent that, uh, leads to a waiver of impact fees, I believe. Um, we don't need to opt into that. We are covered by that program. So if a developer wanted to seek the twenty-five percent in order to get that additional incentive, they could do so. Um, that's, that's the depth of my understanding with that. So if there are more questions on that, we should probably bring up Tom Moner again. So let's just, does anybody want to discuss that?
And you should just before, before you do that, I just want to mention also that I believe that the Lake Forest Mall is within the city's, um, enterprise zone. And I believe on the county's, uh, most recent, uh, um, impact tax revision, I believe they exempted the, uh, enterprise zone anyway. So the county's twenty-five percent program, it, I don't think it would actually get you anything for Lake Forest because it's already exempt from, from those.
But, but our thinking was because this is a long-term plan and we know the subdivision staging policy will be reviewed again in four years. We sort of wanted to potentially get out in front of something that, that may go away with the next update.
Ryan, did we, I'm not sure your question, we're going to get to Neil in a sec because I saw his hand go up, but I'm not sure your question about our authority to enforce a ceiling, was that answered?
I'm not sure. I mean, it's a bit of a hypothetical question anyway, if that, if that recommendation is not necessarily a kind of set in stone type of thing like a special condition would be. Uh, but I'm just sort of curious for our own understanding, like theoretically, could the city put a special condition in a master plan that says you can't have, you know, you can have a thousand resident, up to a thousand residential units on a property, but you, you know, you can't have more than twenty-five percent of them. I'm just throwing these numbers out here, making them up, uh, be, uh, M P D U's, uh, for example. Um, I'm not sure we, I don't know whether we have the authority to place a, a ceiling like that. If, if in the, you know, in the market, the developer decided they sort of wanted to voluntarily create additional M P D U's, uh, beyond the requirement. And I know you all kind of mentioned the county program creates incentives, but you know, that's, that sort of goes to my point. If somebody wanted to build above and beyond, obviously what we're saying here in the draft master plan is we are going to discourage that for a variety of reasons. But could we theoretically even require them to stay underneath?
Right, right. Lynn, Lynn, do you have an opinion on that?
Think that that's something we need to take a look at so we can, uh, get you some information.
Okay, cool. I will go to Neil.
All right. Thanks. I had a couple of questions. Uh, one on that slide again on page ninety-one. Can you put that up for a second? I had a question about the parking for the smaller townhomes, ninety-one. There we go. The last bullet. Uh, I, I'm reading this and it looks to me like what you're saying is you need extra parking for smaller townhomes. I'm pretty sure that's not the intent. What is it that you're really trying to get across here?
Actually, it really is. This is an outgrowth of the approval going back of Crown Neighborhood Three, where there was a large preponderance of sixteen foot units, as discussed, um, in the memo that was supplied in the packet. Um, twenty foot, uh, town, twenty foot wide townhome units, in reality, regardless of code, have four parking spaces, two in the driveway, two in the garage. Anything less, you're now down to two spaces. So when you have large blocks of, of these townhomes, um, what we said, it's really a livability issue. It's not a code issue, um, because under M X D, we can establish the appropriate parking ratio. It's just when we have these, most townhomes typically here in the city, um, not always, but many times are owned by families, a lot of places here within the city are multi-car families. So as you begin to have blocks with a lot of these, um, the livability standpoint is you begin to preclude things like having guests, having parties, getting deliveries. Um, there's not enough proximate, um, accessory parking for this space. And that was really the discussion with council and planning commission during the Crown Neighborhood Three, and that's where we sort of came up for this aspirational ratio, um, to sort of, uh, make sure that, you know, if you have four of these units, there's at least going to be three on-street spaces. So you're not forcing, you know, should you, you know, have a birthday party for your children or the grandparents come over or whatever, that you're not driving your guests into other blocks, creating parking issues in other areas. Or being a disincentive to coming up altogether, or to a point you made earlier, if you're getting deliveries, that you're not clogging up potential, um, residential roads, um, with moving vans or things like that. So it was really um, more of a livability question, um, that we found has worked act, you know, pretty well so far and where we're looking at things. So we're just trying to head off something.
No, that's great. Now, what, what wasn't clear from this slide was it sounded like you needed more parking spaces for smaller units than larger, but the larger ones naturally get more spaces. So you're, you're just trying to make up for the, the half the normal parking spaces, you're making it two point seven five to, as opposed to four, for the smaller units, which is fine. Um, the other question I have, and is the concept that was discussed a few slides earlier of having mixes of, mixes of different types of units on the same block. Um, and I, I just, I don't really see that anywhere. I know in my neighborhood, you have a block of townhomes and you have a block of mixed, uh, mixed use, uh, live works units and a block of single families. I'm wondering if there isn't some level of efficiency for developers and builders that requires economically to build the same type of units in the same block or not. I'm just asking it because I, I don't know the answer.
Um, I think the closest example we have here in the cities in the Parklands community and council member Wu can talk about it. Um, you know, we have some larger townhomes when there's some single family detached, and then they actually have what they term as cottages, all approximately within the same block. So again, this is sort of where the aspirational aspect of a master plan comes in, just because we don't necessarily see it now, doesn't mean we shouldn't be trying to advocate for it, especially since we don't have triplexes or quadplexes yet either. But, um, those would dovetail very nicely with townhomes or even having the ability of some of these other missing middle types on, on a block with, you know, potentially a multi-family, depending upon how it's structured. So, uh, I, I totally, uh, concur with what you're saying. But, but again, part of this role of this master plan is to try to not, you know, acknowledge what's, what is, but you, you know, let's try to, try to get what could be also.
No, I have no problem with aspirations as long as there's some, uh, financial and economic reality behind it. So as long as it, it's, there's no construction cost, a reason why it can't work, then great.
All right. Uh, Mike, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, thanks, Judd. So I want to go back to the bullet on, uh, the third bullet on page ninety. Um, same issue that Ryan was talking about. I'm, I'm, I'm actually a little bit shocked that we would now set a ceiling where we meant to have a floor. And we're not creating and we're, you know, whether or not we create an incentive for more than the floor of affordable units, if M P D U's and workforce. Uh, you know, this, this is a requirement for both, uh, owner occupied as well as, uh, housing, rental housing. So, um, I'm really, uh, not very happy with that particular recommendation here. Um, I think, you know, ultimately it's going to be up to the, to the builder to do that. We're adding, you know, potentially adding sixteen hundred units to a, to a, uh, community in which the majority, probably over fifty percent of the properties are market rate affordable. So I don't think by, uh, having, uh, you know, uh, two units. You know, uh, two units in twenty or one in ten, uh, I'm sorry. You know, any, anywhere from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent should be a, a problem here in terms of. Creating uh, uh, this, this issue that um, uh, the, uh. You know, this differential between the east side neighborhoods and the west side neighborhoods. And I, I, you know, if. If that's the motivation here, I think that's, that's uh, wrong-headed, but I just have a real discomfort. With the fact that we never intended our affordable housing requirement to be the ceiling. It was supposed to be the floor that a minimum, uh, and then uh, also provide incentives to encourage. Developers to increase beyond that. So um, whether it's owner occupied or whether it's uh, rental housing. So um, that, o- other than that, I think, you know, this is, I have no problem with most of the housing recommendations here. But I think there's, there's a bigger issue here. If we're going to revisit affordable housing and what we, what we feel the percentage should be. In terms of, of our policy going forward, then I think that's got to be a separate discussion that, then to. To basically tacitly set a ceiling here, which is even though you're not, you're not making it a special condition. I think uh, we're not also not encouraging the uh, developers to address the great need for affordable housing. Uh, in any residential development, so.
Go ahead, Denise.
Well, I just, I was just going to remind you, one of, part of our aspiration here also is that this is. You know, a dynamic and mixed income neighborhood as well. And so we, we tried to think about the policies that need to be in play. To incentivize things that may not happen, right, just on its own through market forces. And I, I think there is probably some balance between, Mike, what you are asserting and what Ryan was asking about. I think we should probably do the research since the question was asked on whether a ceiling can be instituted. Uh, we do know, we've seen, Tom reminded me of um, your projects. It with the need for additional financing, uh, you know, sought-out tax credits that increased the, the. Percentage of, of affordable units and, and, and we, we appreciate that. I think we support that. We're also trying to maintain this balance and, and create this really aspirational mixed income neighborhood that attracts. You know, a, a broad range of, Rob, I know we talked a lot about that. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add there. We, we certainly do the research. Um, Lynn has offered to do that. And then I, we will, we can reexamine whether our policies need to be looked at in order to achieve that. But we thought what we had as a guideline um, would actually work along those lines.
Well, you know, I just, I, I think we gotta pay attention to the reality of the, of other projects and development. Developments that we've approved and expected to have inclusive affordable housing. And, and we end up with Crown, which has become a pretty exclusive and very expensive neighborhood. And, and we have similar to that. So uh, you know, I, I think aspirations, one thing. Uh, I think that uh, when we start putting artificial, um. Uh, not artificial, but, but suggesting. What is a requirement here? We're going to end up with fewer than we need uh, to, to serve the, the market and our. Our residents, people who want to live here and people who can't afford to live here because there isn't any affordable, they aren't affordable units. So I'm, you know, I'll continue to, to harp on this. I, I did it at the retreat and I'll, I'll, I'll do it here again. But I don't think that that bullet needs to be there.
All right, um, we'll go to Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so since we're still on this uh, third bullet. I just wanted to clarify, when the Crown community was being built. We accepted a floor or a ceiling of fifteen percent. We actually accepted a payout from the developer uh, to. Keep that floor or to uh, maintain the fifteen percent. Is that correct?
Crown was subject to an annexation agreement and we didn't have an affordable housing program at, at the time. So in fact, Crown's affordable housing percentage is twelve percent because it was governed under the county requirements at the time it was annexed. And yes, you are correct. There were some things written into the annexation agreement that allowed um, in certain situations, buyouts related to multifamily. Off the top of my head, it's been so many years, I can't remember the exact uh, requirements under the various annexation agreements. But, but that is a little bit different dynamic than what we're talking about here.
Yes, and so what we're talking about here is the east side of the city has a lot of affordable housing already. And so if we're not uh, moving affordable housing all throughout our city, it's going to be concentrated on the east side of the city. And if we're trying to uh, attract the sort of economic development that we need on the east side of the city. I think a focus on mixed income housing and uh, projects is. Probably what the recommendation was uh, trying to get after.
You, you are correct. When staff was developing this, again, we looked contextually, um, just with the, with the surrounding area. I mean, again, you have four hundred affordable units right across Lost Night Road at the, at cider mill apartments. So even with the fifteen percent required by code, that's two hundred and forty units that are going to be coming in to Lake Forest Mall. But as we discussed, you know, within a mile is the golf course development, which took advantage of the twenty-five percent. So that was five hundred single-family units where twenty-five percent of them are going to be affordable under the county program. So, and part of our discussion with this and what we heard from the public a lot during the outreach was, um, just to the point that council member sales was making that. Really in this immediate area, there's a preponderance of either regulated affordable housing or through market conditions affordable housing.
We still have.
So, so council member says, but that's really where we were going for. We fully support affordable housing. We, we understand. Uh, again, it was just trying to find the balance of what could potentially be right for this new development.
We still have the property that is in uh, Old Town. The Fishman site hasn't even. Uh, broken ground yet. That's another affordable housing project. The uh, apartments across the street is a hundred percent affordable. So we have lots of affordable housing already. And so I think the idea.
Like a lot is relative, you know, I think uh, the ones that, you know, the Fishman one is, is what the percentage is now, which is fifteen percent. So.
Loriann, Loriann, did you have more?
No, I'm, I'm, I mean, if we're going to revisit affordable housing allowances, we should look at other parts of the city as well. That's all.
Yeah, um.
Well, you can only, real housing where you have the oppor, you can only put affordable housing where you have the opportunity to build it. Okay, and so this is, this is the biggest green field in terms of new residential development than, than anywhere else in the city at this point. Uh, until there's another annexation agreement or there's a significant redevelopment, whether it's on the west side or the east side. The whole point of the Affordable Housing Ordinance was to distribute and create inclusive residential communities throughout the city. Wherever they were built. So, you know, I'll, I'll remind you that the spectrum has a seventeen and a half percent. Affordable housing and that was proffered by the developer uh, as part of the approval for their development. So, you know, like I said, I don't think this is gonna, it, it makes a big di, big uh, difference when we're talking about. Adding sixteen-hundred units overall, uh, what are affordable housing? Just sticking to basically the floor, which has now become the ceiling. And I think that's, that's the problem here. I would, and that's, that's where I'll leave it. So I know we're going to have to discuss this again, so I'm just.
Yeah.
About this particular set of recommendations.
You've been, you've been really clear. I think you made the point well. I want to, I want to chime in a little bit and just say, um. I, I agree with Loriann on this one. Um, there is a, there is no doubt, there is a, the preponderance of affordable housing. Is on the east side of the city and I, and I like what staff has done here. Um, by including sort of this broad and interesting range of housing types. Um, with the intent that they can be made with very well, with great finishes and great materials. Uh, but they, you know, they may be affordable to a different price point. Um, but I did want to, I did want to say so much. Uh, so much effort or so much emphasis has been made on affordability here. I think that's, that's good. It's, it's an important value to the city. But I think there should be equal emphasis on getting some higher-end units. Whatever types they are um, on this property, uh, because we are, we are, as Loriann said, we are trying to. Um, revitalize the area. We are trying to attract the uh, the retail and the other uses that come. When the area median income is, is higher. And so I think it's, it's important that the final draft of this master plan. Does include uh, the different housing types in these different opportunities. But it doesn't discourage higher-end housing because I, I think higher-end housing is essential to redevelopment here. So I just want to, I just want to put that in, that, that uh, that in there too. Go ahead, Neil.
Well, I, I just want to uh, echo and agree with everything that you just said and with what Loriann was saying as well. And sorry, Mike, but I think the issue here is we're trying not to concentrate all the, all the affordable housing in one part of the city. And yes, this is a new, new potential development with a lot of units. But as has been said, the, this is the part of the city that has the vast majority of affordable housing. And we're trying to, I thought that the, when I first joined the council, what I learned from you, Mike. Is that the idea of this is that we want to spread out affordable housing throughout the city and mix it in with other housing types. So trying to emphasize additional affordable housing in a neighborhood that's already. Uh, the, the home of affordable housing in the city of Gaithersburg. Uh, especially in a development where there's a large focus on uh, market rate affordable housing. Uh, that's being built already is, just seems like overkill and not appropriate for this particular geography. It's, it's the right philosophy for the city as a whole, but probably not in this spot in my way of thinking.
Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mayor. I figure since we're all weighing in, I, I'll actually weigh in on the, the other side of the scale. And um, you know, I, I hate to use the G-word, but I'll, I'll use it. You know, when you're throwing sixteen-hundred units into an area, and even if you're doing various price points. If those price points happen to be above the market rate for the rest of the area, you're going to drag that area up. Um, as far as, as, as home and pound values are concerned. Um, and so I, I think we need to be careful in, in how we articulate what the goal is for this area. Yes, we do want various price points, but I, I don't think that we need to uh, discourage or disincentivize. Uh, various uses. And so um, I'll, I'll throw my hat in kind of uh, uh, on, on Mike's side of the scale here.
So, I mean, does that mean, Rob, that you would take a part of the city, not a part in which you live? But a part of the city and say, this is an area where we should never allow property, uh. Property uh, values to rise?
I, I'll also say I can throw a stone, uh, it, it's closer to where I live to where you live. Um, but I don't think we're, we're, we're doing that argument here. I'm just saying that. Um, we, we should, we should look at flexibility in, in how we are approaching this from a policy perspective. And you know, to, to Ryan's point, we don't even know what we can and can't do from, from a, um, let's say regulatory. Um, uh, approach with respect to maximums, minimums, or whatever the case may be. So it may just be an academic discussion, but I, I'm just a little bit uncomfortable with the conversation that's going in the direction of. You know, we want to bring in, in uh, as many higher-income individuals than higher-income housing into an area. Because historically, it is, um, you know, i- it's where most of the market rate housing is. I think it's a very, uh, it's a conversation that deserves caution.
Fair enough, but I, I'm equally as uncomfortable uh, picking an area of town and consigning it to. Uh, keeping, you know, depressing property values.
Done that, Judd. We haven't done that. We're talking about one project right now. We're not talking about the entire city and how this fits in. So to say that we're consigning the entire area to, you know, to some crazy destiny. Of uh, you know, of low-income uh, residents, I think is ridiculous because that's what you just suggested. And that's not.
The reality, you can't look at Lake Forest Mall's redevelopment in a silo. It's right across the street from cider mill. And we already know the surrounding home values already. No one's saying that we want to make this an unaffordable place. And we're not trying to gentrify the area, but we do want to prioritize mixed income housing. And I think the different types of housing that have been recommended, these are all recommendations. These are not.
I did not criticize the mix. I criticized the issue of limiting or this regulating affordable housing. That was not, my criticism wasn't about the mix of housing or the style of housing.
All right, all right. I think John Schleckting wants to weigh in. Go ahead, John.
I'm not weighing in. Um, I just wanted to remind you all that this is big picture night. And this is not a policy discussion. And um, you know, we've got a lot of more detail to go through tonight. And there's going to be a lot of opportunity to discuss these issues. All these issues, all your points will be noted, of course. But we've got a sixty-day comment period. We've got a, a joint public hearing in June. And then we've got planning commission recommendation and then policy discussion in August. So there's a, a long road to go here.
Too late now, John.
What's that?
I said.
It's too late now. Fair enough. Okay, um, then let's, let's move forward in the presentation. Go ahead, guys.
Okay, I believe we are ready to start the commercial section of the plan. So the narrative here begins uh, by noting that the mixed use in a redeveloped Lake Forest should include a broader spectrum of commercial unemployment uses. Such as biotech, integrated light manufacturing, uh, ma- maker spaces, entertainment and experiential uses. And the narrative also favors neighborhood goods and services type of retail over the GFO or general merchandise apparel, furniture and other type of retail. Um, and also is advocating for a more diverse employment opportunities uh, than you would normally see in a, in a mixed use development. And while the narrative does note that a mix of uses is not required in every building, it does establish design standards. Um, that will ensure commercial unemployment uses are integrated with other uses. Uh, next slide. So the commercial design standards, um, which like the residential design standards, um, are meant to be high-level and not. Um, me, meant to design individual buildings or blocks. Um, they also seek to ensure uh. That the commercial spaces are designed with flexibility to adapt over time in response to changing market and business demands. Um, they're trying to uh, minimize single-use retail buildings. Um, and include planned walkways and shared open spaces, uh, which can be used to connect separate commercial unemployment buildings with other uses. So that you don't have sort of isolated employment and commercial areas that are separated from the rest of the development. Um, and the road network and green space should be designed to integrate any larger commercial unemployment users along uh, Montgomery Village and Russell Avenue corridors. With the rest of the development. Uh, next slide. So the design standards also seek to ensure that competition between commercial employment and other uses for the same desirable locations. With visibility and easy access um, can be resolved using the goals of the vision framework. Um, shared and structural parking uh, should be utilized to free up land for buildings, amenities, green space and other uh, more productive type uses. And uh, if there are any drive-throughs included, um, those should comply with the planning commission's white paper on uh, best practices. Next slide. And the design standards also seek to ensure that accessory uses are considered when reviewing a primary uh, commercial use. Um, and expanded pedestrian realm is incorporated into ground-level experiential uses, which will facilitate outdoor seating, shopping. Instruction and other activities. Uh, next slide. So the recommendations for commercial um, also are an outgrowth of the narrative. And they call for complying with the commercial design standards that we just went over. Um, allowing an unlimited amount of retail space in vertical mixed-use buildings. And when those are accessory to another primary commercial or employment use. Um, but discouraging standalone, single-tenant retail or uh, solely retail multi-tenant buildings. And their associated surface parking lots. And there, there is a preference for the neighborhood government and services type retail over the uh, general merchandise apparel furnishings and other or GFO type retail. Uh, next slide. Um, so the commercial uh, section also includes three special conditions. So the first one is that the total acreage for all standalone or solely retail buildings and their associated parking lots. Uh, is limited to only, to a maximum of five acres. And the footprint of an individual uh standalone or solely retail building is limited to thirty thousand square feet. Uh next slide. And the final special condition um is just a list of prohibited uses uh as shown on this slide. Uh next slide. Okay, so that concludes the commercial section of the plan. And I'll pause again to see if there are any questions about the section, uh the recommendations, or the special conditions.
Questions, comments? Go ahead, Lloyd.
Yes, I'm I'm concerned about the the physical layout of the way the entire development works. When you have commercial properties, I would like to see something in there about the commercial properties are looking outward rather than inward. In other words, on Lost Knife, for instance, or on Montgomery Village Avenue. If you have all the commercial properties going in towards the development, it discourages people from going from outside the development to coming in. I'd I'd rather see, I'd like to see something in there that would um allow or make some kind of a statement about how the commercial property should be looking out to the the larger area than just looking in towards the development, the developing area itself. Does that make sense, Rob?
Yes, and it's sort of touched upon with the design standards, especially the one talking about Maryland one twenty-four and Russell Avenue.
On slide ninety-three.
Yeah, so it's it's sort of saying, you know, that should relate to those roads and and bring stuff closer uh again. So when you begin to look at the plan holistically and not necessarily section by section, the challenge that we have with your statement is if we're we're talking about increased porosity through a tight grid, there's going to be commercial throughout the site. So again, there's always going to be an internal look. Um the goal of really these plans is to encourage vertical mixed use development, vertical development, shared parking. Um the other sections talk about, you know, acknowledging, engaging um the existing entrances or things like that with the other roads. So I think it's there. Again, the challenge for us, as we mentioned, is not doing a design plan. We just have to throw out, you know, some some of the broader standards. And really, when this moves forward, we either with a sketch plan or a schematic development plan, that's when we can really understand, you know, what, you know, the interaction of the various elevations, how the rid network works. But again, to your point, we did try to broadly touch on it, you know, with the discussion of Russell and and one twenty-four with the discussion, you know, of the grid and and encouraging the vertical mixed use.
And my other point is that the limitation of thirty thousand square feet on a particular building, commercial property, where did that come from? And what does that, what does that mean in terms of type of tenant that can uh take a thirty thousand square foot or beyond?
Um, so i- in the technical memo about the methodologies there, and we're going to do a call to the bullpen and bring in Sharon Dis to explain uh how this, how that's specific. It's very logical, but I I always have problems trying to explain it. So I think Sharon can better explain um how we came up with those special condition standards.
And here she comes. Welcome, Sharon.
Hello. Yes. So the limitation on thirty thousand square feet is simply retail only. We base that on um what the largest neighborhood goods and services retailer would be, which would be a grocery store. And the trend in grocery stores is actually shrinking square footage. Uh so thirty thousand would be about the max of a new grocery store. But we're actually seeing in the industry, it trends more like twelve thousand square feet. But it doesn't prevent a retailer from doing multi-story. It's just a footprint of thirty thousand.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sharon.
Any other questions or comments? Loriann, please.
Here. Um I didn't have a question about the uh the commercial portion, but I don't know if now's the time to go back to the amenities section, or should I wait until we go through the entire post?
We only have one more section, so I'd prefer, you know, if we can um go get through the presentation, those questions, and then we can have a free for all where we go back, because I'm sure discussions have spurred further thought throughout all the sections.
All right. Thank you, Rob. I'll fold my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh we will continue with the presentation.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm gonna turn it back now to Rob Robinson, and he's gonna talk about the post-master plan items.
So Chairman Bauer brought up earlier, did we give any thought? And as we discussed in December, um we felt it was important, while not necessarily part of the master plan, we have to acknowledge what's going to occur with Lake Forest Mall after a master plan is adopted. So we per the guidance, we we included this. And in the narrative, the the main things that we talk about is while we would love to have a a single sketch plan, we have to acknowledge that there's a likelihood that things are going to be phased. And a lot of the discussion that we talked about is, you know, from a financial standpoint, even financing a project of this size requires, you know, income streams. So um we want to continue to be able to use the C two uses. And, you know, the guidance for this document is, you know, the planning commission and staff is, when we look at this, these interim C two uses should be allowed, but they shouldn't prevent the realization of the ultimate vision. So, you know, we don't want a a new pad site where realistically the grid network road would be, so it precludes that. Um, we believe that all the phases should incorporate more than one aspect of mixed use. So a lot of what we've been talking about, and you know, as Councilmember Sales said, even with, you know, starting talking about amenities, it got me thinking, you know, we don't want a sketch plan that's just a single um mi- uh multifamily building. We want to see, you know, what sort of, if we're gonna have the requirement that it's within five minutes of an open space or an amenity, we sort of want to see that to see how that dynamic works. We talk about that whoever the developers is are, I'm sorry, um they're encouraged to engage the adjacent owners on the phased design. So even if this becomes a situation where there's multiple owners who are going to build this, we want to make sure and we want to try to accommodate this interaction. So even if one owner is not necessarily ready to move forward, at least they understand and can offer input to the one who is. The last two bullets sort of dovetailed into one another. We had talked about um during the work session, and we wrote in here, the acknowledgement that you know, at a certain point, if we're not seeing a lot of traction, one of the hindrances, you know, may require direct public investment. And we are very clear in the master plan, much as we were in December's work session. That does not necessarily mean the city of Gaithersburg solely. What that means is, you know, there are opportunities at the federal level, public-private partnerships. This could be state funding, this could be county funding, or it could be the city of Gaithersburg funding, or a combination thereof. So this direct investment, you know, typically it's related to infrastructure just to get something moving. Um the land use article requires that master plans be looked at every ten years. But we felt, you know, even with this, you know, it may be worth, even if it's outside of that cycle, just to do its own individual assessment on how the implementation of the recommendations are going. Um master plans, as we know, are are living, breathing documents. You know, we're not writing scripture. So this, you know, just because we have it here doesn't necessarily mean, you know, in ten years, if we look at something and go on, yeah, the world's changed, maybe it's time for a tweak. You know, we can do that. Uh next slide, please. So with the recommendations, um it's very clear, the city will help facilitate communication and coordination amongst the mall site owners to encourage, to encourage a single holistic development and and try to avoid the piecemeal or a disconnected implementation plan. So we don't want, you know, group A building something that obviously the way their layout and design and everything in no way jives with what group B wants to do. Um, we want to acknowledge the potential need for interim uses and be flexible in their review. Uh the plan does not support comprehensive rezoning, and this is what Chair Bauer brought up earlier. And the reason for this is this allows interim development under the existing C two zone and avoids unnecessary procedures related to the MXD zoning. So what this really means is for everyone, if we comp zoned MXD and somebody wants to put in a pad site, they're gonna have to submit an SDP, then they're gonna have to submit a final site plan. So it just, if the the goal is to try to help people build up the financial wherewithal to do the greater plan to begin to saddle them with additional application costs and and time and procedures, um that's sort of counterintuitive. Plus, as another um benefit is, uh next slide, please. The the keeping it C two and not doing a comp rezoning ensures this first bullet. So what we say is the first phase of any multi-phase must incorporate a minimum of ten acres. Um MXD zone, you know, basically says, you know, you have to be a minimum of ten acres um for for, you know, rezoning and sketch plan. So really, by by not comp rezoning, we can pretty much ensure that we're going to get a, the first phase, if it's a phased development, is going to include a lot of stuff to look at, and it's not going to be, you know, one single multifamily building as the first phase, where we really won't have a sense of what's going on um in a larger picture in the review. Um, again, any of the interim uses or phases not, must not prevent the realization of the plan's vision and recommendations. And again, as a recommendation coming out of the narrative, that we will in ten years from adoption perform an assessment regarding the success or failure in implementing the plan's recommendations. Um, next, so before we move on, that's really what I have for post-master plan. Um before I move on to, you know, the sort of the conclusion and next steps, and then we can open up. Are there any questions on this section?
We'll go to Ryan.
Um, another technical question, similar to the last technical question that I asked, without getting into a policy debate. The, a couple of the slides in this section refer to uh making sure that interim uses not prevent the realization of the plan's vision. You know, sort of just, again, as a technical matter, how do we do that? Is that something that's enforceable if you say that it's not a comprehensive rezoning? And so the properties in the short term remain C C two. I mean, i- is there, does, does the master plan create sort of an additional layer on top of that C two uh zoning rights that the property owner may have with respect to certain interim uses, trying to figure out how that would work?
So thi- this is, um, it it's convoluted, but there is a logic behind it. Um the findings that the planning commission technically has to make on Euclidean zone properties are such that while you, if you develop under the current C two zoning, you're not implementing the master plan, but they may consider um the larger worldview. And under the, you know, the larger findings under one ninety and one ninety-one, there is an opportunity to require change. So for example, you know, if we have the recommendation that, you know, that we wanted to see, you know, the link between Lake Forest Boulevard and Contour Road. If an interim condition that we know is going to be a while, you know, creates, you know, a retail strip that, you know, is going straight across that and would blow up any grid, we would have the planning commission and staff, you know, staff first going, you really shouldn't do this, but the planning commission and their discussion could potentially, you know, avoid it from that standpoint. So that i- it's it's ambiguous, but if we don't have anything, we want to make sure people understand we're going to be looking at this. You know, we want people to make money, we want the master plan to come in, but we acknowledge that there may be these these interim conditions, but in sometimes interim conditions can be twenty-five years. So we don't want, you know, something put into play that's going to prevent, you know, either another party or another parcel from developing in accordance with the master plan.
I I understand the reasoning behind it. I just want to make sure we understand the, how the authority comes into play. So uh if it's a planning commission and a staff issue, that's fine. I guess I'm just not as familiar with how that works when you've got a a buy red zone.
Rob Wu.
Thanks, Mayor. Just uh two questions. Um first question relates to um, you know, kind of thinking of our our exceeding prescience, or perhaps your exceeding prescience with seven hundred Quins Orchard in tying the phasing of the the residential um with the redevelopment of the office aspect, which worked out very well for for the city in that regard. I I missed any ask, any, and and I apologize if it's in there. Is there anything in the recommendations that deals with interim or final redevelopment and demolition of the mall? Like, what happens if, for example, there's a a a proposal to develop along Lost Knife, some uh commercial aspect that meets the ten, the ten acre requirement? When, you know, just across the way, you've got a mall that is 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 on I hate to say on life support right now, but you know, i- i- it it could result in a situation where you've got a a a derelict use. It was there any thought to tying a more comprehensive redevelopment and a requirement that that mall be demolished and and we move there as the initial point for the area?
There was lots of talk, and there's, we could not find an answer. So not not to try to bob and weave and and dodge the question, but we wrote in there, the amount of scenarios that could occur are well beyond our scope and beyond the scope of this master plan and its overall goal. We didn't want to be put in a position, well, we didn't feel it was appropriate, given um the direction of this master plan to try to dictate how phasing is going to occur, because we just can't predict. So that's why, again, the the language encourages, you know, that, you know, we won't have a situation like that in in a perfect world. Um, you know, it'll be one sketch plan, one owner, a- and they'll lay out all the phasing for us. But if that doesn't occur, this is why we sort of have to try to put these safeguards that that talk about a higher look, because I I understand where you're coming from. It's just too hard to try to figure out who the owners are going to be. We know who the owners are now, but who the owners or developers are going to be, what's going to be financeable, and you know, what what they do. So it was, it was just too much of a heavy lift for us for this document without getting into, and this is how we want it phased, which our fear was, would then, you know, potentially create an environment where nothing occurs.
Thank you. And and the second question deals with, you know, I I, we made a a conscious decision early on in the process to exclude adjacent property owners who are interested in kind of taking part in this process. Perhaps getting um land use elements that that in place that are different than what they have now. You know, I I'd also include, you know, across the street, there's been discussion about the the holiday insight and the underlying land use element there. I would assume that all of those, you know, back when the 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 master plan for this area was most recently updated, up, came under the assumption that there was a commercial mall in the area. And now we're kind of moving away from that. And so could you share with me your thoughts or walk me through the impacts perhaps in in making the decision of 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 keeping the mall C two and not doing uh comprehensive rezoning? And what impacts that may have on the way that adjacent land owner, land use adjacent landowners can look at the future prospects for their properties?
Um, th- there's multiple ways to approach this. First of all, um, you know, just to get in the weeds, page fifty-eight of the document, the last sentence, "The plan further acknowledges the importance of reviewing the surrounding properties as part of the next land use element amendment in light of and in response to the recommendations contained herein." So even while in the short term, we still may be having C two things, we are of the opinion, and, you know, as was sort of discussed, we're hoping relatively within two fiscal years to begin, you know, diligent work on the land use element. We're gonna review those properties based upon the recommendations in this and not the existing C two zoning. Going back, um as you may remember, in our discussion in December about why we didn't include the other properties, it was different context. Again, we had buildings being shuttered here. Um let's, you know, at that point, you know, uh the Holiday Inn wasn't shuttered yet. Um so we were working under a moratorium with these properties. It was a very different dynamic. But we even acknowledged, and we were afraid, sort of afraid of the scope creep thing, what would begin to spin out of control. But we fully acknowledge, uh especially in light of some of the discussion with the Public Use Text Amendment, those other properties um need to be looked at, including the ones in the county. And we coordinated with our friends at Montgomery Planning. So I I don't want to make it sound as if by allowing C two interim uses, we're encouraging the mall to remain. We're not. We're just providing a more economical and easier procedural process for them to continue to do something that generates income to get to the point where they can do the full master plan.
Okay, yeah, that, no, that's a great, a great response, Rob, and and I like the thinking there. You know, my concern would be, let's let's just take, for example, the Holiday Inn property that we we were talking about recently. You know, if if you're looking at, at, if they're looking at other uses and they're comparing compatibility externally, that the response back not be, well, you've got commercial across the s- the the way, when we know or hope, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line, it it's not commercial. So if you're doing long-term planning for that parcel, that it not be constrained to the the historical uses i- in the area.
Well, I I I totally agree with Councilmember Wu. I mean, the world is, the world is changing, even without, you know, how the world's going to change with the pandemic. So I think that's why we must take a deeper dive. Uh it was just, let let's get Lake Forest out of the way, so we know, sort of get a sense of what's going to come there before we start looking at everything else.
Loriann, did you have a question about the amenities before we go to the public?
Oh, yes. Okay.
May may I do just do the wrap up, and then we can go to amenities?
Oh, sorry. I thought I thought we were there. Go ahead, Rob.
Almost. This is going a lot faster than I thought, so. So the next steps, um, we're gonna review what comes out of here. We're gonna, as as John had mentioned, we're gonna prepare to release the plan for the formal sixty day comment period by the end of March. Um, we do anticipate the consolidated joint public hearing to occur in June. Um and with that, basically, the way it would lay out is June would be there. We would have a record. The planning commission would do their recommendation and approval in July, and we're hoping to come back before And we're hoping to come back before council August sixteenth, because the moratorium expires August seventeenth. So again, that's sort of where we're going. Um, the project page remains open. Once we do the formal release, the record will be on, kept on the project page. So everybody real time will be able to track the comments that come in. So heading into the public hearing, um, the discussion, the great discussion that we had about, um, you know, the affordable housing, I want to make everybody aware. We're not going to resolve that tonight. That wasn't the goal. But you know, there is a chance to amend the plan after the public hearing. That's the role of the comment period really and of the joint public hearing. So, um, just because this tonight's been great and, you know, a lot of the non-comment heart does my heart well, but that, once it goes out to the public, not everybody may feel the same. So that's really where we sit. Again, I thank every, I think, you know, the council and the planning commission for your support throughout this process. And with that, we'll open it back up so we can go to council member sales question about amenities.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um, so great presentation from the staff to consolidate all of the comments that were received with the incredible outreach you guys undertook last year. So thank you for that. I know Rob just brought up the Holiday Inn property and I know there were concerns about some of the amenities that were proposed at the Holiday Inn. And so when I was looking at the recommendations about the amenities that were coming to this site, I saw descriptors about diversity and abilities. I don't know if I saw anything about ages.
Yes, we, we do. Um, I don't have the presentation in front of me, but.
Page seventy-five. Cause I know with the Silver Springs Civic Center, I know they have lots of different spaces that can be rented out. And I just want us to keep in mind that we may need a new senior center and this could be a good site.
We agree. And as we discussed in December, um, while we feel these civic use or uses are appropriate, we just felt at this stage of the master plan, it wasn't proper for us to direct which type of those uses to occur. So again, we didn't want to discount anything, but we didn't want to take a position where we were encouraging, you know, are advocating for a specific use. To, to your question about ages, we sort of had that under the bullet where it's dealing with diverse backgrounds. We weren't just, you know, it was, it was a broader look, not just ethnicity or religion, but it was, you know, including ages. The physical ability, again, we just find an issue is a lot of times, you know, people with physical disabilities, you know, there's not always equal access to parks. So we wanted to make sure that's there. So we're, we're totally on board. We, we understand, again, if we want a mixed income, mixed, you know, diverse community, that includes our seniors.
Okay. With Asbury right across the street, we definitely want to make sure those pedestrian crossings are safe so that they can get to all these amenities and new developments as well.
All right. Any other comments before we go to the public? Mike, go ahead.
Thanks, Jed. I want to echo Lorianne's comments to, or kudos to staff for putting this draft plan together. I think you guys hit all the, touched all the bases and, you know, you had a good nine innings here. So, you know, we are in spring training, so I got to use some of these analogies. I did have one question about the post master plan section on page eighty-nine or ninety-nine, I guess. Looks like the fifth bullet may need a direct public investment. Now, maybe this is related somewhat to Lorianne's comments about a potential civic use related to seniors or multi-purpose facility. But maybe you can elucidate a little bit on that, what that means.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, so what we meant really meant by that is, is as we look and you, if you know, if we're like five years in from post adoption, and we really haven't seen any traction and we find out, you know, one of the big hamstrings is, you know, something related to infrastructure. Say, you know, it's really road construction or, or it's, it's running conduit or something like that. That's where we just, we didn't want to commit any particular level of government or any particular government. But we wanted to acknowledge, you know, there may be these needs where, where a governmental entity does direct public investment to help, in a sense, maybe underwrite some of these infrastructures improvements that are needed in order to move forward with the plan. Going back to the amenities, you know, a separate thing, we did discuss the viability of P threes and the development of civic uses. But really what we're talking about post master plan is not, you know, funding a specific element of the plan. It's helping to invest, to get the plan moving so the recommendations can come forward.
Okay. Um, I guess I want to go back to this issue of a potential pedestrian bridges on the major roads. Cause we've just, you know, in the last five minutes, the issue of connectivity to the adjacent areas and the impact of the development here on those areas and allowing those to prosper as well. I just, I don't know if you, if there's some thought to include something like, like ways to enhance connectivity to the, to the surrounding areas. Whether it's, well, for both pedestrians, but also non-pedestrian traffic. So bike, bicycle as well as motorized connections. I think Rob's, Rob Wu's talked about the the adjacent commercial property between three fifty-five and Russell also being influenced, perhaps influencing their decisions about development or redevelopment there is important to take into account as well. So anyway, just some thoughts off the top of my head. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. I saw Lorianne's hand go up. Go ahead, Lorianne.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I saw on page eighty about the Transit Center. I know we've talked a bit about moving the Transit Center to Russell Avenue. Was that part of the recommendations or is that not being considered after all?
No, i- i- it was. And I'm trying to find specifically where we had it. So on the presentation, page eighty-three, under the recommendations, the last bullet. While they're getting it, I'll just read, "Any redevelopment design should retain and enhance the Lake Forest Transit Center and explore a possible relocation closer to Maryland three fifty-five with a shared parking or other P three strategies." So again, coming out of our December work session, it was clear from the public, from the council and the planning commission, everybody acknowledges the importance of the Transit Center. The, and, and in best case scenario, you know, it would be relocated and enhanced, but there's a lot of moving parts there. So this is why we wanted to write something that if nothing else, you know, it, even if it has to stay where it is, it should be enhanced. It, you know, it shouldn't be minimized and made as an afterthought. And if possible, even through P three opportunities, it should be relocated from an operational standpoint and for better integration into the overall development being moved closer to three fifty-five. We didn't feel comfortable saying, and here's where it should go along Russell Avenue. So that's why, you know, some of these, again, not doing a design plan, it seems a little wishy-washy. But, but the important crux points are there for guidance on a redevelopment.
Thank you, Rob. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. Any, any other questions before we go to the public? Not seeing anybody. Okay. Tech team, do you want to play the instructional video? For those of you who are, who are in the public who are interested in watching this, we'll give you instructions on how to get our attention.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Thank you, tech team. I see a couple of hands up. Let's start. Tech team, if you could bring up David Belgard. We, so we asked that you state your name and address or neighborhood. For the record, keep your remarks no more than three minutes. If you have more than three minutes worth of remarks, feel free to send it to, send them to us in writing and we'll consider them, just like oral testimony. Dave, go right ahead. State your name and address and go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm Dave Belgard, Washington Woods. Obviously, a lot of mince effort has gone, gone into this document, which is, it looks great. The one thing that I, well, I noticed a couple of things, but I think most of the comments should be saved for the sixty day period where I will definitely comment into that. But the one thing that I did notice, I didn't see in this document at all was the, during the last meeting, there, there was a discussion of kind of set aside for some sort of a Hallmark Art Center or, or something like that. And you know, nowhere in this, in this master plan document, did I see anything that talked about that or talked to or, you know, set aside for a city park with some sort of hallmark that, 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 that creates a special space for, you know, this site. And I think that an important thing to address the master plan, unless that's not the place to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave. Next, we will move on to Robert Rogers. And Robert, if you can just unmute yourself, state your name and address or neighborhood or affiliation and, and go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Appreciate being here. Thanks for all the good work on this project. Three comments. One is, I don't understand.
Hold on, Robert. I need, I'm going to need you to state your, your name.
Oh, sorry.
And your address or your neighborhood. Go right ahead.
Sorry. My name is Robert Rogers. I live in Kentlins and actually in the Colonnade Building, looking over Giant Food to, to Kentlins proper. Three comments. One's a question. I don't understand why there's a push for a grid pattern of streets. My understanding of a grid pattern, it's rectangular, but meantime, here in Kentlins, it's got some wonderful curvilinear streets which add a lot of interest and, and, and still you have a good way of combining open space and, and, and the different amenities. Second, I didn't see any information on green building or sustainable design or, or dealing somehow with this big, huge overarching question about climate change and it's all this dramatic implications. Maybe it doesn't belong in this kind of document at this point, and maybe it comes up later. So that's just a question about where that would show up. And then the final thing is learning from Kentlins. As I mentioned, I look over Giant Food and I see the new Starbucks and I see the new Chipotle and Cold Stone Creamery. Those were developed, as I understand, as strip development until they could get ready for the big project when, when at home would be torn down and the adjacent buildings up to Giant Food. And then a real urban downtown Kentlins would be developed. And in my own experience as an architect for many years, it's like you default to what's easiest to do. And as Robert Wu mentioned, the, the tendency along a lost knife would be to build that C two because it's easy. It's my right. And at, at some point, then you lose what's the good potential of this incredible work that's been going forward. So it's just a comment as to how do you manage the buy right, which is always easier to do from a developer perspective and, and keep the big picture in mind. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll, I'll circle back with staff a little bit after hearing from the public and see if we can address a couple of these things. Otherwise, we'll, certainly there's, there's a lot of time between now and the public hearing and we'll be glad to correspond. So next tech team, if you could bring up Jody Klein. Jody, you know, you know, the routine here. State your name and go right ahead. Well, you do have to unmute.
I've got two different buttons here. I think, can you finally hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, yes. Uh, my name's Jody Klein. My address is two hundred B Monroe Street in Rockville, and I'm a new face to the Lake Forest Mall discussions. I am recently been engaged by WRS to be their land use council to work with them and assist them through the master plan procedures. And I'm here tonight merely to tell you how excited WS, WRS is to get to the serious discussions with you and your staff and to create a dialogue to advance the plan. They also are anxious to get those conversations going. I know you've heard from them before about their concerns about the duration of the gestation of the master plan really makes it so much easier for a vacant store in the mall to just decide to bail out and rent the building to somebody with, that you don't want to have there and lease to an undesirable tenant and derail the redevelopment for years. So we're here to basically to encourage you to give your direction to staff to get to work on that master plan amendment, because when you do that, it has two effects. One is the energy that is created by the dialogue between all of the people involved in it. The pages that Rob was talking about available for public view. But it also sends a message to the private capital markets and the other owners in the center that something positive is happening. And that's what WRS needs to have the other property owners here because they're, 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 they're strained. And they got to know that something's going to be coming in the near future. The other thing I was going to say really kind of flowed out of your conversation this evening. The sixty day public comment period is rather static if you're just exchanging emails. You all raised some very good and very challenging questions this evening. And if the master plan procedure goes as it's predicted right now, you're going to end up with a master plan in June that a lot of the, a lot of you don't really agree with yet. And I just can't see how a work session is going to work that all out on August the sixteenth. My, my recommendation would be that you try and encourage a more interactive discussion and dialogue with staff and the property owners so that the draft you see in June is much more fine-grained and has a lot more of these basic decisions already made. Maybe I got spoiled by Kentlins, but I saw how getting community groups together could really work out a lot of issues in advance. So then we got to the decision-making process, there weren't these long debates about what are the features. But the bottom line from WRS is let's get it going because it's really critical to make this mall redevelopment occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Tech team, if you could bring up Raleigh Smith, please. Raleigh, just unmute yourself, state your name, address, and go right ahead.
Okay, I'm, uh, can you hear me? Yes, and I'm with the Gathersburg Beloved Community Initiative. We're located at Asbury Methodist Village. I just want to say we will be with you all the way through. And we will, because you are, this is a very important to us. I am very pleased with the amount of attention you're giving to connectivity with what's around there. And I, as you know, we work very closely with the schools and we work very closely with Cyder Mill and the other apartments in the area. On the discussion of affordable housing, I hope you don't get locked into affordable to who is the question. It's not just, don't, don't think of affordable housing as a one type thing. It's affordable to who? And we should be looking at our neighbors and giving them an opportunity to move in a path. So it's not just low income housing. It's affordable to a broad range. I, our biggest concern is the timing. And if you're, if this is a twenty-five euro phase plan, many of us who live here are not going to see the result of it. We really do urge this thing to move along and we hope that you would be entertained with, would be able to work with a WRS or some other owner that would be able to take the whole thing and be able to move it along. Also, on the, on the idea of commercial, are the people that we work with need jobs, depend, they're coming out of the pandemic. And we hope that that will be a high level of, of concern for the, as we go along in the planning. I really like the idea of, of this being an interactional type of process, not just a bunch of opinions that come into you and then you manage those. I, I really hope we can bring the whole community along. I, I really hope we can, uh, bring the whole community along, uh, as we, as we move along. But thank you for all your great work. It's, it's really an exciting project and, and I'm so glad we're finally at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Raleigh. Do we have any other speakers from the public? Going once, going twice. Okay. Not seeing any other hands. Raleigh talks about, uh, timing and, and his, his fervent wish that it doesn't, that all this doesn't take 25 years. And I'm telling you right now, you are preaching to the converted. We, we would love to see this speed along. There is so much like right now, if I had to put a percentage of it i- in terms of what the city has control of, it's probably 10%. Probably 90% of this is out of our hands. Uh, but we would, there's not so, anybody you see on this screen that wouldn't like to see it happen sooner and, and, uh, this property reach its potential sooner than that. Rob Robinson, I'm going to just follow up on a couple of things that came up from public comments. Dave Belgard's comment about amenities and, uh, the specifics, uh, as, as to what should be in a park and what should be in a master plan.
Um, so going back to the discussion earlier, we talked about civic uses and this is the same as the senior center. We are not going to advocate for any particular type of use. And going back to the discussion of the Performing Arts Center falls under that category.
Great. Um, that's what I thought the answer would be. And then, uh, let's talk about what, uh, Rob, Ms. Rogers, uh, from Kentlands, uh, says about the grid pattern. Um, did you have any question?
Kentlands is 320 acres. We're working with 86. A tight grid pattern works a lot better than a curvilinear road. Again, Lake Forest does not have, uh, lakes in the middle of it like Kentlands does that have to be moved around.
And in terms of the, um, spelling out like green building codes, is it fair?
So we have the, the green building code. We have the environment and sustainability element that lays out a lot of direction for our sustainable initiatives. Part of the goal of any master plan is to dovetail and interact with the other master plans. So it's covered there. And again, you know, anything that comes in here is subject to the city's green building code.
Yeah. Yep. Um, and we're, we're actually quite proud of it. And in terms of comments in this, thank you, Rob. I, i- in terms of comments that we got from, uh, from Raleigh and from Jody.
So I'd like to step in just to make sure. So everybody's aware, because we are governed under the land use article. The comment period is not meant to be interactive. We will not change the document until after the joint public hearing. The whole purpose is for that 60 days is to collate all the comments from every interested party, agency, stakeholder, et cetera, collate those and present those at the joint public hearing for the discussion. So we're not going to be doing a, a live back and forth. We're not going to be changing the document prior to the public hearing. So again, that's all sort of set out.
Okay. Thank you, Rob, for, for clarifying that. I just want to remind everyone that this whole process did start with, with one of our largest and most successful public outreach, uh, campaigns that I could remember. With the city, we, we actually got thousands of comments. I'm not exaggerating. We literally got thousands of comments about Lake Forest because a lot of this, this property is central to a lot of our lives. And so people care and that's a good thing. And there will continue to be opportunities for, uh, the public to weigh in as we, as we move forward. I wanted to piggyback on comments from council members about, uh, in, in thanking our staff and congratulating them on doing an outstanding job. Managed, you know, uh, implementing that public outreach campaign, managing the comments, putting it into a form that, that is sort of the beginning, uh, to, to, uh, get us to where we need to be for this master plan update. You guys have done a superb job and deserve to be congratulated and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, and with that, is there any other comments, John? Did, was there, you want to tie it up with a bow or anything?
Uh, no, I, it's, it's well wrapped and, and I think it's timed out to let it, let the, let the public, uh, speak. And we'll, we'll get back to it with our, our discussion recommendation.
Great. We thank the planning commission for, uh, being with us in, um, Tanisha, unless there's anything more from staff, then.
I don't think so. They, they did a fantastic job. I'm glad you all agree. Uh, so we will move on to the next step.
Yes, indeed. Okay. Well, then, um, I'll remind everybody that the next, our next meeting is Monday, March 15th, regular meeting of mayor and council. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.